So hopefully you all can hear me for the mass attendance and all votes will be done through roll call. So board members, when your name is called, please cast your vote with the three available options of yes approved or abstain. Board members, please respond here when I call your name. And if there's, yes, I see one board member that's on Zoom, so we want to make sure that you can hear us and we can hear you. So having said that, I will do roll call vote real quick. Kristin, you're first on the list now.
David G.
Yeah.
Jay.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Here.
Kristin?
Here.
Kathy?
Here.
Patty?
Here.
Rebecca?
Yeah.
Betty? John?
Here.
Kelsey?
Yeah.
David T?
Here.
Let's see, Doug May is not here today, but Eric?
Here.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay. So good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming tonight. Before we get started, I'd just like to remind everyone of our agreed upon core values. And those are integrity, perseverance, family, respect, collaboration, and trust. These values support our mission of being a caring school community dedicated to excellence. And our vision of being a safe, dynamic learning community where people of all ages will think, aspire, and participate as responsible citizens in an ever-changing global society. As Jay said, this meeting is being held in person and on Zoom. So for the citizen comment, public participation section, which is number three, for the non-budget items on tonight's agenda, in accordance with RSU number 38 policy BEDH, public participation at board meetings, the following guidelines will be followed. For those attending via Zoom, you will notice that the microphones will be muted except for during identified portions of public comment at this meeting. If you're viewing on Zoom and would like to speak during the public comment, please use the chat feature to notify Diane McGregor and she'll communicate with you. In-person speakers, please sign up on the sheet on the clipboard by the door. Also, speakers, please identify yourself with first and last name and the town you live in. Priority will be given to individuals who live or pay taxes in our member communities, immediate family members of enrolled students and employees of RSU 38. Individuals that do not have one of these direct connections to our district may or may not be given permission to speak at the direction of the board chair. We ask that speakers limit their comments to three minutes, and if someone who has a similar view of yours speaks, please reference their comment rather than repeat the same ideas. We do want to hear from all of our stakeholders and ask that you be respectful when you have constructive comments. I'd also like to clarify how we address concerns of the public. In accordance with RSU 38 policy BEDH, we welcome all respectful comments and concerns, and we ask that you not use any derogatory comments or use names or identifying comments about any district personnel. We cannot discuss specific personnel matters in the public setting, but can listen to broad concerns that folks may have. All speakers are to address the chair and direct your questions or comments to a particular board member only through the chair. The board will hear and report comments and questions, but will not debate the matters at this meeting. Board members' questions must be addressed through the chair. Following the meeting, we'll take time to research and gather information on any questions that might come up, and then we'll report back at the next meeting. As always, the public is encouraged to call the superintendent at any time with any issues or concerns that you may have. So are there any citizen comments that are not budget-related? It's on the mic, wait. Diane, do we have anybody from the public? Okay, thank you for looking. Are there any additions or adjustments to the agenda by the board or superintendent? Okay, we'll move right on to our action information items. Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes of the February 1st meeting?
I move to approve the approval of the meeting minutes of February 1st, 2023.
Second. So it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the February 1st meeting. All those in favor?
Oh, I know you.
Oh, sorry.
Roll call. Roll call. Kristen. First vote.
Jane.
David G.
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Tyler?
Abstain.
Christine?
Yes.
Kathy?
Abstain.
Patty?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty? Sean?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yeah.
David T?
Yes.
Eric?
Abstain.
Abstain.
So I'm assuming that those of us that abstained was because we weren't present at the meeting. Is that right, Tyler?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so now we have some policy second readings. Okay, before we go to the policy second readings, we do have the acceptance of the teacher resignation. Is there a motion for approval?
I move that we accept the teacher resignation, expected 8/29/23, special education, Sarah. Nelson.
Any discussion?
Kristen?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Kristen, sorry.
Yeah.
David G.
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes, with regret.
Patty?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Kelsey? And David T?
Yes.
And Eric?
Yes.
Okay. Now we'll go on to the policy second readings. Oh my goodness. I'm sorry. I got the wrong thing here. Okay, we have another resignation. So I'm just trying to avoid these resignations. That's what I'm doing. Is there a motion?
I move we accept the teacher resignation for high school. Teacher Carolyn Gross.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded to accept the resignation of Carolyn Gross. Any no discussion?
Kristen?
Yeah.
David G.
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yeah.
Betty?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes, and I just want to say thank you. She was my daughter's coach of multiple sports and really made it so my daughter loves the sport.
Kelsey?
Yeah.
David T?
Yes.
And Eric?
Yes.
Again, we. We never wish to speak better.
Okay, now we'll look at the policy second readings. So is there a motion?
I move we approve policy C.
Is there any just?
Rebecca? I just wanted to point out that the part that was taken out, including hair texture, hair style, and hair styles, it rang a bell with me and I looked it up in April of last year. It's passed in the law that race was defined as this, so I didn't know.
We did discuss that at the policy meeting at length, and we still felt that we need to take it.
So does that mean? Does that mean that means still in state statute, so we're in trouble? But shouldn't it be referenced though? This is a question of why, why didn't you agree to take it?
Do you want to add anything? I was just going to say that.
And that I didn't know about the legislative background, the fact that it is statute when we discussed it. I think what if I, Kathy, please correct me if I am speaking correctly, we felt that race could be defined as so many other things that we were wondering why it was narrowly just mentioning this one aspect of race. We didn't know that this is how race was being defined globally. So I think that was the conversation we had, knowing that it could come to the board and we could opt to keep it in as well, which we knew was a vulnerability and we'd be okay with, but.
Yeah, I think we just wanted to have it to be a little bit, not so narrow, wanted it to be a little broader. But like Annie said, I mean, if that's something that the board would rather be kept, we can vote on that and keep it in. That's why we're bringing it for a second reading.
I'm fine with the change as long as, as we all know now, it's in state statute, and we recognize that those are part of race identification, certainly not limited to those, but part.
Okay. I wonder if it would be good to reference the state statute even if it doesn't. Just, it just seems like it would. I'm not even sure what, I don't know what the L.
Oh, yeah.
Right, it is referenced.
Yeah.
Right. Thank you, Patty. Any other discussions on any of these, that one or any of the other things? So all those in favor?
All right, so roll call. Kristen?
Yeah.
David G.
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
And David Pletcher?
Yes.
And Eric?
Yes.
No, not me.
Okay, is there a motion to consider the request to adjust the school year count?
I move to support the recommendation of the superintendent making Friday, March 17th a regular day for students and staff, and moving the teacher workshop day to follow the last student day, day in June. Furthermore, I need to encourage the superintendent to use the remote learning days appropriate for any further closures.
Second. Any discussion?
I'd like to share some information very quickly before Patty does. We got a notification yesterday at like 2:15 from the main DOE that allows for, they will, we have to fill out a waiver, but they will pay meals that are for the most days now, and they want that all to find out and whether we one of them. I know this is a really long and involved memo. The long and short of it is that if we have any more days, it really needs to be, whether closure days, they need to be remote days. Other, if they're not home those days, we have to make up those days. And we're still discussing how to make up one day from October 31st that's only for middle school and high school, and we're working, we're trying to work out plans for that day right now. But that one only fits middle and high school, so. So that's a long, there's a lot of information there, so please ask the question so I can help you understand why I asked, why I asked.
Patty? Well, you answered one of my questions, thank you. But my other question is, was, and I should know, but I don't, is, was the last, was the day following the last student day going to be a teacher workshop day anyway?
Yeah, so now I'm done with, you know, have the regular workshop day and then have that last day. So those two days have begun by some people, women, people who are for the first day, but most of them have, that's what I'm, yeah, so. The cycle is moving.
Any other questions or thoughts or?
So. I'm just not a fan of remote learning days. I really think the kids need to be in school, kids miss gym class, those things are important to students. I, there's multiple, like I counted up multiple Mondays that students have missed gym class, gym classes cut short sometimes. There's other classes, there's other things that are important to students. I just really struggle with it. And wasn't a fan of it before. I think kids need to be in school. I think it's not equitable for when kids are home because kids are stuck with grandma, grandpa, multiple people, and can't learn, or stuck with their brother and sister, and can't learn. I really believe that students need to be in school. I understand it might be tough, and tough decisions have to be made, so I won't be supporting this.
So. Question.
Go ahead, David.
One of the other options could be just head days at the end of the year somehow.
We can't do that because we have to be within five days of graduation. Graduation is staying within five days of the last full student day. So because we have graduation on a Tuesday, so that means we're already three days from the last student day. If we don't leave in four days, then we're totally gone. But if we start to have snow days, then that means we basically can have two closure days to make up. And any further beyond that, we have to be remote, or we have to make them up with a Saturday, adding an hour, maybe for five days. And we're vacation, like people, vacation day. You have very limited options for me.
Johnson?
So we, I've read other schools are doing, I guess I'm not. I saw there was other schools that are extending.
Yes.
So are they moving graduation?
No, they're not moving graduation. That's why they're doing it, so that way they can make up the time.
So I just.
I feel like we've talked about this before, but we cannot cut into like an April vacation legally.
We can.
We could.
Not going to be popular, but.
But it's, it's as needed, not like we planned for that, and it'll only be, because that's after the bulk of winter when closure happens. I like that because honestly, I can't keep up with all the vacations. So that seems like a good solution. But I guess I thought, and this is why I asked, is that we, there was some kind of law, X amount of vacations, right?
No, no, you're up there on X amount of days, which is 107.5%.
And I know that's not very popular with staff and in the vacation time, but sometimes.
I'm just asking, future that we push graduation back a little bit to give a little bit of wiggle, so we're not stuck in this position of saying we have to do remote learning or we're going to mess up graduation. It's a pretty crappy position.
The reason we're not just so, you know, is because we're using the civic center. If we went down to a, for morality of graduation, then this problem kind of goes away. But we, we booked for this year, so we're shut for this year, but we can certainly look at that for next year as a possibility. We did ask the civic center that anybody in our community about, it's almost going to happen, but chances of that happening anytime soon are very, very small.
Thank you.
So I know. So I know that there were several options that were kind of being thrown around. I'm just wondering if there was any feedback from any of the staff or the administration about any of the options, like adding a day on, an hour on a day, or taking a Saturday or remote, you know? I just wonder what the staff and the administrators were thinking about.
I don't have that with me. I did put out a Sunday, I opened it Friday. If I had a look at the, I think I really. I apologize, I can't find it. But about 66, so 74 responses, 66% likely add an hour at the end of the day, but it's like the five days. That was the, that was Saturday was the lowest one, like 15% in the option to vacation. No, the vacation day was the lowest, and then the Saturday was the lowest for the state. So what did this, this is how it's going. It's not much, I know we're voting.
I don't have the sports that are in front of me, but are there any other early release days?
There is only one.
The big, right?
There's only one happening this week and one happening in May. We only have two early release days. And then we have the one, which is whatever that thing, right here, so.
Okay, so.
So right now, just to kind of frame it for everyone, if we do do the slot, like with move, then we're, we're right now, we need to be, and I'm kind of walking on wood, hoping we're not going to get another storm day. The only day that we have to figure out how we're going to make up is that October 31st, 32nd, and middle school and high school. So that's the only day that came out that I still need to figure out. And I wanted to get some input before we made any kind of final decision on that. So once we have that, I was certainly wondering.
That's if we don't have any snow.
That's if we don't have any storm, any more snow, or any more emergency days.
And it used to be, anyone, I don't know. That most happened in March.
Yeah.
So.
Now.
Somebody, Tyler.
What, well, I couldn't hear you. What was the response for adding an hour? Because I mean, if I remember back a while ago, that was always the option that I think the students were most comfortable with, was just adding an hour rather than either, I mean, we obviously didn't have the remote learning days, but I remember the extra hour. If we had to tack it on, it wasn't, nobody really, or ever remember really batting an eye to just adding an hour, a couple of days to make it up. So I'd be, instead of tack, you know, doing remote learning or anything, just tacking on an extra hour to make up that class time.
So it was about 66% of the respondents were in favor of that. So we still have this motion on the floor that we need to vote on that is taking the workshop day, taking the March 17th day and turning it into a regular day and the remote learning for any other emergency days. That's the motion on the floor right now. So we can either vote on it, we can amend it, we can table it, whatever you pledge.
Can I amend the motion?
Hold on just a second. I think we should break it up because we can't pressure our plan on having more students. It needs to be contingent to be for when that happens, then separate from that is how to make up the. Separate. And then, and I agree with Kelsey, I think, fortunately by being able to break the.
Go ahead, Tyler.
Can I amend the motion and just, instead of using remote days, tack the hour on as needed? And then probably use that, we could almost use that same option to make up the day for the high school, just make the high school and middle school make up that extra day.
I will have to file, just so everyone knows, I do have to file a waiver with the state if we go with the hour. But I don't, that's not, don't. But I do have to file a waiver with the state to be able to do that. Just so you know, not like, I got to let them know what's going on right after.
So I just want to make sure I get that amendment.
Right, so I would. I would amend, I'm trying to, I'm reading the sample motion again. So furthermore, I move to support the superintendent's use of adding an extra hour as appropriate for any future closures and to make up the October 25th, or October 31st day at the high school and middle school.
Saying adding, adding an hour. Is that what you're, what you're saying?
Yeah, adding an hour on to.
Both of those scenarios.
Both of those scenarios.
So would that mean March 17 would not be regular day anymore? That was, yeah, okay. So March 17.
Stay.
Stay, okay.
So we need to vote on the amendment. Patty, do you have something? Just had another question, but have we left discussion?
No, no.
Mike, the, what you were saying about 66% of people were not, was that just staff?
That was just, yeah.
And so was the remote option what was the most preferable in that?
Yes, I put the three options to the name to choose which, if they could choose which one would you prefer to choose. So I did the add one hour, choose five different days, get a, make up a day, a Saturday or a vacation.
So remote wasn't included in that, those options?
No, I didn't do a remote because that's a, that's a board level decision. So if we're going to do remote days, I need permission from you guys to do that. If you guys aren't supporting that, then it's not an option. At the time, it wasn't a issue.
So we don't really know if staff would rather have remote or added on.
That, like, I didn't ask about.
So what we do know, what we do know is that from that, that of those options, staff would rather add an hour on than a Saturday, and the least favorable was vacation. Okay. So we need to vote on the amendment?
The first half is saying. Right, right. I move to add an hour as appropriate for any teachers. No days, it's one emergency day.
Now.
Now, okay, thank you. As well as to, and use this option to make up, you know, October 31st date for middle. Tyler.
No. That's, that's how, that's what I meant.
Okay, so first we have to vote on the amendment, and then we vote on the motion as amended. Right, we don't have a second amendment. Don't. Second.
Oh, second.
There's the amendment. Okay, any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of?
Sorry. Okay, Kristen? David G?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yeah.
Betty?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yeah.
David T?
Yes.
And Eric?
Yes.
All right, so the amendment.
Okay, so now we need to vote on the motion as amended, so. Donna, can you read that? Sorry, the whole motion, okay. I move to support the recommendation of the superintendent making Friday, March 17th a regular day for students and staff, and moving the teacher workshop day.
And moving to the teacher workshop day, follow the last student day in need. Furthermore, I move to add an hour to the days for any further snow day, as well as to use this option to make up the October thirty-first day for the middle school. That sound?
Did that capture it, Tyler, you think?
Yeah, that captured it.
Okay, any other discussion?
All right, Kristen.
Yeah.
David G.
Yes.
Annie.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Patty.
Yes.
Rebecca.
Yeah.
Betty.
Yes.
Sean.
Yes.
Kelsey.
Yeah.
David G.
Yes.
Annie Perry.
Yes.
Any one of us? Yeah. Yeah, we'll just leave them up.
So I just wanted to give you a little bit of a legislative update of where we're at. I met, uh, the MSBA Legislative Committee, actually the whole board of the MSBA met on Saturday. And as guest speakers, we had Joe Rafferty, who was one of the co-chairs of the Edu- Education Committee, and Mike Brennan, who's the other co-chair, um, Jeff, Joe Rafferty's from Kennebunk and Mike Brennan's from Portland. They were our guests and they, they stayed with us for an entire hour, giving us some information about what's going on in the legislature as far as schools are concerned and where they're at. So I just wanted to give you a brief, um, review of some of the things that they said. So the first thing, um, Senator Lafferty talked to us about, one of the biggest concerns that they're facing right now is really everything that we're all facing is recruiting and keeping teachers. And they're really working on thinking about ways to, um, incentive, you know, different incentives other than money to help keep teachers and staff. They're working on trying to develop some workforce development, working with college, uh, teacher colleges so that, um, they can have people in the, in the schools before they graduate. Um, so that's one thing. They're also looking at reforming the certification process. They didn't really get into too much about what that looks like, but one of the things is, um, allowing people from out of state to, to be certified in Maine as well, without going through the whole process of having to get certified in Maine. So that was a, another thing. And Senator Lafferty is really, really big on local control. So a lot of the bills that are coming in front of the legislature right now, he's really trying to balance between the mandates of the state and the, and, and allowing local control. And some of the, when you, when I say local control, some of those things are like, what time should the high schools start? We talked, I sent some of these out to you, so you've probably seen some of them. So, you know, school starting time, that really should be local control. The recess for grade six through eight, that needs to be local control. Thirty minute lunches, all those kinds of things, they're really looking at, you know, in that, in the Ed Committee, keeping that at local control. So the less mandated things for those small things, what they call the small things, the better. He also has a really great interest in CTE programs at the middle level. And there also is a bill in, in the leg, uh, in the committee right now for, um, funding for CTEs for middle schools. And one of the biggest questions that we had was where is the money going to go? Is it going to go to the CTE or is it going to go to the district? We haven't really got that answer yet, so we're still waiting. Keep in mind, all these bills are just going in front of the committee right now to discuss, to see whether or not they're going to bring them to the legislature. Um, the other thing that he talked a little bit about is a bill that comes up, he said just about every single session, is to modify the school funding formula. And that's something that they want to look at, but he did say that once the two seventy-nine is out, it's really hard to change that. So for this year, it's probably not going to change much, but again, they're looking at it. And then there's a lot of things around what they're calling the Parents' Bill of Rights. So you've probably heard some of that, um, discussion also, but that's some things that are coming up. And then Mike Brennan talked a little bit more about that. But he talked a lot, something that I was really interested in, what he talked about was, um, a DOE study recently, and some of you may know about this, um, showing fifty percent of the third graders in Maine are below grade level in reading. And this is really concerning to the Education Committee, to the legislature, to, to look at what can we, as a legislature, do about that? So one of the things that he's going to do, Mike Brennan is going to do, is going to be, um, introducing a bill that will put more money towards professional development for teachers based on the science of reading. So he's hoping that this bill will include some incentives for schools who participate in training and implementing the science of reading. So I was really happy to hear that and hear that they're really going to be pushing that, that they're, they're very concerned about where our elementary stu- students are across the state right now. And one of the things that we as a MSBA Board asked is what can we do as local boards and the MSBA Board to help the legislature? And the biggest thing they kept saying over and over, and I said this before, we have a really strong voice in the legislature, and I don't know if we really understand how strong our voice is. But it's really important for school boards to contact their legislators, to have them in the schools. And, and he even recommended having like a legislative school day, where you invite all the, you know, your local senators and representatives to come to schools and stay in the school for the day, go in classes with kids, talk to kids, talk to teachers. That's how they're going to, going to really realize what's going on in our schools. And we've also, we're, we've already reached out to them, but we will be reaching out to our local senators and legislators to come to this meeting. Um, one of the next two, two meetings, I can't remember the exact date. But hopefully they'll come and be able to talk to us and, and hear our concerns of what's going on in our state for our kids. Um, so one of the things they said, it's really important to, um, provide them with data on all of these proposed bills. You know, what data do we have? Like one of the bills that was going for it was the, the pinch sensors on the bus doors. And they were, you know, they, he said, how many, how many kids have been pinched by the bus doors? We'd really like to know before we make this a law, that they have, you know, it's like, I don't know. But, you know, so things like that, the data, you know, how many, how many schools actually have recess for sixth through eighth grade? You know, he, they don't have all this information, and the only place they can get it is from us. So they really want that, um, information. Um, and the other thing is to testify at the hearings. You know, it's really important for us to, and, and like I told you before, MSBA always has a representative at the hearings. They testify on every bill that they can testify on. Um, and we as a, as a MSBA Board decide whether or not we're supporting or not those bills. And then they take that information and vote in front of the committee and testify. Um, and then, um, Mike Brennan talked a lot about some of the things that are coming up as far as the parental, um, parental rights and, um, Senator Lafferty didn't really have a whole lot to say about that. But, um, Representative Brennan did say that when you say parental bill of rights, the things that he sees coming across or might be coming across are things like banning CRT, banning SEL, requiring the teaching of the Constitution, parent notification of whatever's going on, whatever is going on with their students, school vouchers, allowing parents to decide if students can opt out of certain curriculum topic, topics, allowing armed personnel in schools, allowing discharge of weapons closer than five hundred feet from schools, allowing parents to opt their kids out of practice, practicing safety drills, and book banning. So this is just a small little list of some of the things that may be coming up as bills in, in front of the Education Committee. There are a hundred and ninety bills right now that will be heard by this committee, which is a lot. So it's, you know, they're going, I, I have, I, we had a meeting yesterday with the Legislative Committee and I was not able to attend, but I should be getting the information tomorrow or Friday about the latest bills that have gone or will be going and when the hearings are and where we stand, I'll send that information all about to you. So if you ever have any questions about any of this stuff, you can, I'll try to answer it. I don't have all the details of all of these, um, bills that are going through, but there's a lot going on and it's really important for us to, um, have the information that we need and be informed and, and know what we want, what we think. Christine? So I'm really happy to hear that, um, Senator Brennan is concerned about reading. Um, a lot of people think that the concerns about reading are related to a pandemic and they're not because reading data is consistent from, it's exactly the same as it was before COVID. Um, and it's terrible and it's terrible nationwide. And I would encourage everyone to listen to, it's a six, one-hour session podcast. It's called Sold a Story. I don't know if anybody's familiar with it. Um, but this was put together by an, an American public media, um, reporter on reading instruction in the United States. Um, and I'm not going to say anything more about it, um, because I, I certainly have very strong feelings and opinions about it, but I would just recommend that everybody listen to it. It's called Sold a Story. Yeah, so there's a website, uh, and then if you search for that podcast on, um, you know, on any, like, old podcasts or wherever, they, you'll, you'll find that, um, yeah. And, and I was really happy when I heard him talking about the need to really do something about the reading. Um, when we said fifty percent of our students, trust me, are below, in the third grade or below reading level. It, I did think that, you know, we are in this district moving towards using the science of reading, which is, which was really, you know, I was glad to hear that. Mike Brennan said that, knowing that we're doing that. So hopefully, some of that, um, money incentives and all that stuff is talking. And that's it from my, from my, from my, um, from my seat today. Anybody have any other questions?
I have any questions, I go. I just wanted to ask, uh, you can testify via Zoom, which makes it a lot easier. So if you're like home or at work, want to take a lunch break, like I had four public hearings for my members today. And we had a guy up in four-ten justify from his gas station and some.
And you can also write letters.
Yeah, you can write letters.
As testimony, so.
It's very, it's very easy, we'll try to make it as easy as possible.
So it's important that they hear from school boards.
Senator Higman's talking today and said. That's good. I've been hammering them on.
Tyler?
I just have a question where MSBA is preliminary on the parental bill of rights.
Well, um, because it's really, hasn't really been presented yet as, um, specifically as that. We haven't taken a stand yet, we're waiting to get more information. Some of the things that are coming forward, we may support, and some of the things we may not. I mean, we don't know exactly what. I was just giving you a general.
Okay.
What Representative Brennan said that he thinks is going to be coming.
Okay.
And I think they'll be, those things will be coming up as individual bills, not as like one.
One big bill, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's how we're, they'll be coming out as LPs. They're not out, a lot of them aren't out.
Right.
I know. They're not up.
Anything else? Okay. We're now moving into the budget workshop.
So, um, as we're transitioning into the budget workshop, um, Diane's going to pull up, um, the slideshow that we're going to use. I'm going to invite up, um, um, Dr. Dan Smith, who's going to talk about the multilingual learners. And, uh, I get in talented part to the budget and then Diane the Breger, um, she will follow up with technology right after that. Then there will be some updates, um, and then we'll get into more discussions and comment. So Dr. Smith, if you'd like to come up, um, you can pick it off. And Diane, if you wanted to skip right to hearing section, that would be perfect. We do have a couple of slides, but it's the reminders of what are, are over, and then the team directives from there. We won't go over those again. We'll do an, run over it again, so, I mean, sake of time, we'll skip ours to the next presentation. Dr. Smith, Tyler?
So, good evening. Uh, so the first, uh, item, uh, in, um, the budget is the multilingual learners, um, budget. Uh, it's, it, that's the new terminology that's being, uh, used by the DOE. Um, formerly we've called it English language learners. Um, and so currently we have a teacher of multilingual language learners. That's point four FTE. And really, um, how we determine the need is based on our, on our numbers. And we are recommending, um, to make that position, um, from forty percent to fifty percent. Um, we have had an increase in, um, our population, um, in enrollment numbers in that area. Um, I prepared a handout, I'm not sure, yeah, so I prepared a handout to really, um, explain what this, um, position, uh, responsibilities are and why it's important, um, to ensure that we're meeting the needs of our multilingual learners in the district. Um, in speaking with other districts, um, also, you know, we anticipate, it's hard to tell for sure, but we do anticipate that, you know, we had an increase this fall, we had a, um, a decline during, like, the remote instruction time, our numbers went down, but then they came back up doubled, um, this year, um, in the fall, and we anticipate that those numbers might continually increase um, as the multilingual learners, um, demographics change in the state. Um, but as for right now, we are recommending that, um, slight increase, and the amount is right there of the approximate cost. So if no one has any questions about that, the next one is the Get It In Talented budget. Um, and there is no recommendation, um, to increase that budget. So we're staying, um, as is, we have, um, current staffing, um, is meeting our needs, and, um, so there is no increase.
Any questions from the board?
We have possibly, so, um, it said from K through twelve. Uh, I was under the, like, if they're talented, starts at grade three?
It does, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
They consult, right. I mean, that's just how you're supposed to describe it, um, like, we do serve, get it in town, district-wise.
Christine, I don't want to ask, um, you, I don't know if you know this at this point, or if you would need to look into it, but do you know the number of students that are served by the, you know, the current BLO teacher?
Yes, I do know. Yeah.
So how many is it?
It's, it's, it's a very small, um, number.
Yeah.
I, you know, it's, but it's also a very identifiable number. Um, so I hesitate.
Yeah.
It's pretty easy to.
Okay, that's fine.
Identify those individuals, and I want to honor.
I see.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, I support the increase in, in that, and I, um, the reason I was wondering is because I, um, think it would be really challenging as a halftime person to serve a district the size with so many different school buildings. Um, so, um, totally appreciate your response, thank you.
So, Christine, if I could just get that out as well. When I first started here, we actually had a point eight, um, BLO teacher. And then our numbers steadily dropped for a couple of years, so we backed that down to where we are right now, which is three, it's three point four, um, FTE. But now we're seeing that number going back the other way. And I also have, um, kind of concern about the number of people that are moving into our system. Um, the other thing that is, uh, is very challenging for the BLO teacher is, um, we are starting to actually get more stations in fact as well. And they are automatically in that program, they actually have the test, test data, making all that kind of stuff. So, again, that's another layer that's like, it's fluid, um, because they come in at different points of the year. I'm not telling you anything, but I already know, so, um, but just something to have a little, like, just a thought project.
Yeah, thanks, I appreciate that.
Okay. All right, okay.
Thank you.
And Diane is up next. We'll get another.
Hi, everyone. Um, so technology, um, essentially the budget is the same as last year. What I'm talking about tonight is that we had, um, media center, technology, ed tech that was put in with the grant funding. And so I just sort of wanted to talk about that because I'd like to move that into the regular budget. Um, and what we've been doing is we, um, since twenty twenty one, we had a change in staffing at the media center in the high school. And we took this opportunity to really start reimagining that space and, uh, just talking, thinking about what are our needs? And what are, what's not being met? Previously, um, at the middle school, we had really done a lot to reimagine the media center there. And it included a lot of technology. And what we were seeing was that the high school needs were not being met. And we, with the change in staffing, we, um, just really looked at how can we infuse more technology into the media center at the high school? Um, we've had, uh, at least six meetings, um, when the new staff was hired, what does that look like? Um, and then, um, looking at, um, traditionally that the media center at the high school had an ed tech in it. But somehow when we got talking about adding, uh, technology, media, ed tech, it sort of got out of the budget and came into the grant funding. So it's one of those positions that, you know, now that we're looking at it, you know, it just doesn't make sense that we wouldn't have some, another ed tech in the media center. Um, and we're just really talking about, you know, what does that look like? We've had a year and a half now with this person. And it, I just want to describe what are some typical things that she's been able to do in there. On a typical day, we have between seven hundred and fifty and nine hundred devices at the high school on the network. Okay, that's student devices, that's teacher devices, it's Apple TVs, that's, um, all of these different devices that are on there. And printers, tablets, you know, there's just a lot of, of things that are on the network. And any one of these might need attention. And we've been able to really have like a triage spot of somebody who's really, um, adaptable and able to help. Especially the first thing in the morning, getting things going, um, if we have guest speakers. Um, we're just, you know, moving from classroom supports. I just want to say that the high school is one of our highest and most advanced users in the district. And to be able to quickly meet those needs and get a, get the, you know, whatever the problem is, solve as quickly as possible. Has been so beneficial. Um, it could be as easy as restarting an Apple TV, uh, doing a quick update, fixing a projector. Um, all of those things impact classroom time. And then for students, they, their issues can be quickly fixed as well by coming into the media center and, um, working on those things. Not to say that we, we have different levels, right? So we have, and the ability to fix the quick things quickly. And then our tech that's in the high school does the more advanced types of things that need to be fixed, works on the network. Um, fix, helps with copier issues, you know, all of those types of things that take a little bit more time to, um, to research and fix. The other thing that we've been able to do in the last year and a half is we have a tracking system for all of our devices. And we've never had that before and it's tied directly into our destiny management system, which is part of the media center, right? That's all of our books, but now we have a resource section in there that tracks all of the laptops, iPads, everything that's out in our buil- in our buildings. It also does billing for us. Um, we have never been able to really track the way that we're able to now. Um, we're also able to get, um, loners out much more quickly. Uh, we're just even just cleaning machines. You know, it, it, there, i- if, if someone comes in with a dirty machine asking for some help, not only do they get the help, they get a little clean on their machines. And I feel like that brings a lot of pride into, you know, what we have. Um, the other thing that I will say is that we have a very great tech team approach. And part of our approach is that we have tech support as part of an email system that everyone on my team can see what's coming in. So we're able to spot trends, we're able to help anyone in the district, right? So a lot of our people, this person can help elementary people that are like teachers submit to tech support if there's something going on. And we can respond with a quick fix of something that they could try or set up a time to meet with them. Um, and there's definitely like that triage approach as far as we know the things that are really quick to fix. And then we know things that our most advanced technicians need to get to. Um, just last month, we had an issue with our network. And within a half an hour, we could see that the network was slow at a number of our buildings. And that really helps us to really spot that trend and be able to say, okay, now we're calling MSLN. And we're checking our filters, we're checking firewalls, all these things. And so those are the types of things that, um, this person is able to help with as well. Um, there's also just within the media center talking about, um, bringing in, we have some VR goggles that, that were being used. We can take those into the classroom. Um, there's, um, just hooking up subs with iPads so that they can use it for the day while they're helping to sub. Um, supporting Hour of Code and the Google Doodle, um, art contest that Google does. There's things that come up with common sense media, um, and just managing passwords. That we're all just managing passwords, but you know, students need that extra help. And finally, able to support parents in getting into Power School so that they could do their online forms. Those are all things that were happening in the last year and a half that had been flooding our high school. And I just, I feel strongly that, you know, they're our highest users. And to be able to give them that kind of support for this technology has been very, very valuable. So I'd like to recommend that we put this into the regular budget full time. Um, Michelle La Forge and I have been meeting to do the visioning for this and coming up with, um, you know, ideas and things to put into practice. Liz Gilmet, the media center librarian at the high school, um, has been also a part of our tech team meetings now. And so she's a part of all of this. She knows what's going on with technology and media and media center. She brings that to us. We know what she's doing. It's really very fluid and that is an area that most media centers are really embracing of this, this technology. And so that's where we're going with that. Does anybody have any questions?
David?
Um, so if, just to find understanding, this, uh, technology attack is. Uh, an advanced IT person.
Well, it's, she's. She's the triage, so she's like the first line. And then I have more advanced people who do the more complicated stuff, things that, and they sometimes need to leave the high school to go work on network issues that might be happening at a, a different school.
And so losing this person would put more of the lower level things like helping the child get their passwords sorted out.
Yes.
Or the teacher or whatever, uh, would throw those things onto the others who would then back up.
Yes. And the other thing that she does is she covers the media center when Liz, the librarian, goes to like the freshman English classes and talks about plagiarism. Or if there's another class going on, or, you know, there's just a lot of different, um, things that Liz is able to do. Go to a department meeting and find out what the department might need for resources on upcoming things that they're, you know, researching and that sort of thing. So it's, it's coverage, it's triaging, there's just a lot of, it's, it's a very busy place. And really, the, the kids coming into the media center has increased so much since we've been doing this change.
Sure. That's right. Um, and so, uh, within this technology age, when things are already expanding in our community, in our country. You're looking even to be expanding further in the technology available to the students and teachers in schools as a whole. Uh, whereas removing, you're saying that removing this person will actually back us up. We wouldn't have the staff, technology staff to be able to do the expansion, much less cover as well as we're doing the technology we have now.
Yes.
Is this a part, part time position now? It's a full time position now, but if you would like to continue.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you.
So, um, from the last meeting when you talked, um, you guys asked me to put together some data for you. So, um, the first page that you're looking at is the little extract packet in your, um, in your folder. It's eleven pages long. The first page, one and page two, what I did with the grant funding positions is I was trying to rate them of importance, um, at least from my perspective. Um, like I said, my first initial thought was to put a one all the way down. Then my second thought was to put a three all the way down. And I was like, no, you're popping out. You gotta kind of say what you think is most important. Um, so you can see what I, what, what I rated those, uh, grant funded positions, where I rated them. Um, and I do think if the question that was asked, what's going to happen to a lot of these things, really restructuring and putting some of that work back on to other people. Um, so can we do it? Yes, we can. Um, is it going to be invasive and effective? Maybe, maybe not. So it's one of those things that, so I did, I didn't put any one because I do, I have to honestly say, I do believe that if we, um, need it to, we can function without them. It won't be ideal, but we can function without them. So that's why you see more degrees and when there's a couple of teams that I think are real, um, important based on needs, um, that I hear about across the district. So the second part of that with the positions in the general budget, so what I wanted to do was just let you guys know that we're working through those positions. Um, like we do with any other year. So those are the things that you go through. Those you'll see, they're in the budget, um, going forward here. Uh, I did add in BLL, um, and the school psychologist stipend, um, as well. Ryan is actually going, he's got his time and we will talk about that, um, as a March first. So I'm not going to spend time on that one because I want Ryan to be able to, um, give the rationale for that going forward. Um, but again, all of those positions will be in that, that is the budget. The one that's outstanding is still the student resource office that I found a new direction on. Is it in or not at this point? So I tried to break it up just to make it a little bit, um, we had a really big number. So by punching it, you can see, okay, what is the number look like there? Uh, I won't read those to you. The page three, four, five, and six, and seven, sorry about that. Um, I sent out a survey to Mount Vernon and Wayne Stat to ask them their thoughts around, um, a full time school in their building. I thought it was important to take a look at how many of those staff members have only ever had a full time since vote? And how many of them have seen both a full time and, um, then part of part time school? So then I asked them, what do they see as the benefits? And you can see these are the raw responses, um, going down through. And then the second question that I asked them there is, um, what is your view of the principal staffing, um, discussion? Would you prefer a full time or do you think you can do with a half time? So you can see it was overwhelming. They would like to see the full time. And then I did put a, a response, um, a spot for any other comments they wanted, um, you guys to be able to see and hear. Because I know you're not going to hear from Paul, so this is a, an easy way to kind of do that, um, going forward. The next page on page eight, I broke down the nursing provisions just so that you could see how the nurses are sectioned out across the district. Um, we have a full time in Wayne, a full time in Redfield. We share one in Mount Vernon and WES. Uh, the middle school is actually two fifty percent people. And again, at the high school, we have one full time person. So again, you can see what the breakdown looks like. You guys also asked for intervention numbers. So I got those together as of two thirteen twenty twenty. And again, very simple. Um, what do the numbers look like going across, uh, the various schools, um, both in that and in literacy? Um, if there was a literacy ed tech, I did include the numbers there. If they're gonna act, obviously they don't have that. Um, but I wanted you guys to be able to see kind of what those numbers look like. Um, because again, that's probably gonna, um, be part of it. And then the, um, school counselors, um, um, I think it was, I don't even put it on the spot, but I think it was Carol Wicks that basically sent, uh, that information forward. So again, I wanted to make sure everyone had it. Um, there's two letters there. Plus on page ten, there's some something about specific, um, that I wanted to share with you guys as well, um, going forward. So that is the basic updates. Um, I will say, um, to you guys, when we get to the discussion phase, I do kind of need to know, remember what I said? I'm going to say it this way. Remember what I said last meeting? It's easier to put something in the budget and then remove it as we go forward than it is to say it's not even in there and we don't build it in there. And then we have to go put it in, then the numbers start going up again. So it's so much easier to have a number and start to whittle it down versus whittle it down and then bring it back up. That usually doesn't go well with the community. So, but, um, having said that, I'll answer any questions before you guys get to the discussion.
Done?
There's not been any more discussion with shares.
I had a real, I have not, we've only, she's like, just have not had a chance to catch up with you.
That's true.
Yeah, that's what it is. So, uh, it won't be that number. It was, he told me it's not going to be that number.
He said that, but I think we need to get a real number.
Right. I agree with you. And as soon as I have that, I will communicate that with you guys. It's getting hard again. Thank you so much.
I had multiple, but I can.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you remind me why the high school math teacher, the space that I was going out to?
The high school math teacher?
Yes.
That was, um, Michelle is asking for that. And she is asking for that so that they can take, um, and start incorporating a computer, um, computer science classes. Um, because one of the math teachers turned, does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, they just said.
Yeah, yeah, I just couldn't remember.
Yeah.
Right, just for that new class that we.
Yeah, not just for that new class, but still that, but the, yeah.
Putting that new class in made it like the need for another math.
It brings it all back. That's true.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Sean?
Good for now.
Anyone else? This isn't discussion yet, right? This is just.
There's no more.
There's no more questions. I'll be going to discussion. Okay, I don't see any more questions. Go ahead.
So I I would also like to know what the number is for the um the school resource officer. Um. But what I would like to say upfront is I I thought that the um presentation from the officer was tremendous. He was a great guy. I think he'd be an asset to the school. But when I look at this list of needs and I think about where we are in terms of instruction and our first mission um it's hard for me to personally, it's hard for me to support the the addition of that position which we don't yet have. Um. When I, when I look at things and and I'm I'm reading um comments about people going without a full-time principal and how that really is, I mean, we we all know that these positions aren't cut in half. When the position is cut in half, it's a person doing a full-time job with half pay. And we're talking about retention and we're talking about um you know, satisfactory work environments and and uh recruitment of teachers and and admin. Um I I just that I I will like to, I will look forward to the update on the numbers, but I just Jay said that you are interested in guidance on this and that at some point you'll need to get that from us and um I just, that's, I think it's too preliminary to make a decision about it because we don't have that final number, but I just.
Thank you. Any other discussion about any of this? Tyler?
I I'm gonna, I'm gonna be upfront. Given how many positions that we're looking at adding, I don't think I'm gonna be able to support adding the S R O. Given, you know, the fact that we're looking at, we need, you know, we need teachers, we we're looking at possibly having to cut all of these other positions. I think it would, I just don't think it sends the right look to sit here and cut stuff like interventionists, ed techs, guidance, principals, nurses, and then to turn around and add an S R O. I just, I just, I don't like the message it sends. I don't think it's what's best for the student's education, their pure education. And I just, I don't, I don't think this is the year to do it, given what we're adding to the budget and given the, all the other costs that are going on.
First question I have is, and I guess I should ask this in the middle school, but I'll ask it now because it's never too late. It's how budgets work. Was there any discussion of adding a middle school P E teacher so kids have P E more than before a school year? I mean, I get it. Was that in discussion? Was that ever brought up?
Hasn't brought up.
And then. I've seen. So when it comes to the school resource officer, to me, it is a big deal. And I mean, you gotta look at the value of these things. I mean, we've done it in past budgets. We had numbers of, how many students does it have? And if students aren't in a sa- a safe place to learn, then it's not, it's not good. We've had more expulsions this year than we had in my whole nine years. There's been situations. Trying to be careful so I don't identify people and say, hey, but situations where our, that aren't safe for our students. And the principals have tried to do the best they can with the tools they have to solve these things. With kids, well, it was out there with kids having knives on the bus. That is scary. We had a we had a student in one of the letters that from Ms. LaJoy that said, you know, don't forget, folks, we had a student before the school year. We started our school year on a very sad note, folks. And I know many kids that do not feel safe coming to school here. That is a fact. That's not anecdote. They probably would come here, but it's it's nerve-wracking for students. And if our students are not safe to learn and we are failing our kids, we are failing, I've heard it from teachers who would come here, but they're scared. And that is a problem to me, but that's a story for a different day. Who tell me they see kids with drugs. They need one more thing to get these kids out of our schools. It's right there on a bubble. It's all part of mental health and making sure our kid, it's it's a combination. We can add counselors, but some kids don't respond to those things. I've done a lot of reading about this. Kids respond to different things. It's a fact in life. And some kids may not feel comfortable with school counseling. Some kids may not feel comfortable with the principal. I've heard things about a school resource officer. Well, school resource officer has done this in another state. Well, teachers have done things in other states. Teachers have done things in our state. Does that mean we should ban all teachers? No, that is ludicrous. And the the slams on police officers, I've about had enough of it. Those are people are respected members of our community. Their children go to our schools and I think we are failing our children. And that's all I have to say.
So um cert- I'm I'm yeah, I mean, I completely agree that safety is a priority. Um one of the considerations that I am you know, one of the things I'm considering when deciding whether to support a school resource officer position is the fact that there is not a deterrent effect as far as I can tell. And I um that, yeah, so so I'm not sure that we should put it in the light of this will make our schools safer. Um maybe I've I've heard um people speak in support of the school resource officer and I work with a school resource officer and they're wonderful and they make great connections with staff. They make great connections with students and parents. Um some students feel very comfortable going to them. It's a, it's a great situation. Um. But I, the data that I've been able to see does not um translate to your schools are a safer place when there's a school resource officer. I would love to look at any studies that show them. Um if anybody has any of that information. Dave?
Yeah, I definitely support the S R O, you know. If the kids aren't feeling safe, any at any time, I don't think it is enough specialists that's gonna make a difference, you know. Um I really don't. If this instability, um like I said, if nobody feels safe, then all the other things aren't gonna make a big difference if they're scared and not feeling feeling, I think it's an important thing. It's a little bit of stability.
The FBI does have data and I'd be happy to bring that to the meeting. And also the School Resource Center in Maine that was formed by the legislature, I believe it was in the hundred and twenty-ninth or one thirtieth, I can't remember the year when it was formed. Their recommendation is, and it's in their recommendation, I'd be happy to have them come here if we would be allowed to invite them, that every school in the state of Maine have school resources.
So I just want to add to that, when we're at the M S B A level talking about school safety and talking about bills that say school personnel should be able to carry guns and all that stuff. What we continually come back to as a group, and and this group is of nineteen people that represent all counties in the state and then some, it's the whole state. It always comes back to every school needs a resource officer. That is, that's what we're, we keep coming back to. We don't need guns in the school. We don't need staff members with guns and all that. We need resource offices.
Gives me the comfort.
I I agree. Um I think I see four uh three guidance counselors. I guess, I don't know how many we have.
Certainly have three.
Three guidance counselors total.
No, at the elementary.
Okay. We, what I'm saying is we have a lot of mental health uh specialists from social workers, psychologists, uh guidance counselors. Um and I just think that is great. But I have to agree that the officer brings something else to the table that's maybe a missing puzzle piece. Because these things, I mean, that the counselors maybe aren't there. I don't wanna say, I don't wanna say failing us, but I think there's a, there's a piece of the puzzle that's missing and this might be that. It's that.
David and then.
There were a few. Um. I definitely think that as Sean and another said, and as Dane was previously with us and the research says that an S R O does bring reassurance to many of the children, many of the teachers too perhaps. Uh I think that I loved your way of putting it, that it brings something else to the table. I disagree that, well, it looks like we've got plenty of social workers. We read the letters that we got from some of our social workers. That could be debated, just as the idea that we have plenty of uh technology support was finding out that we might not. Uh. So in that sense, I support having an S R O. But for me, we also we've gotten actually strong statements that we need more elementary guidance. We have three, but we're four elementary schools, just as we're not having a principal instead of splitting principals between schools. Uh and so I really like the idea of the reassurance. And I have no problem with accepting that it's not gonna be a hundred and forty thousand dollars and how much lower how much lower uh isn't as important to me. Uh in that sense, I don't need to find what there's a, to me, you sort of said, I can give you that when you decide that you want. And I'm I'm equating that. The range I accept would be less than this. But as you were saying, we're cutting back on quite a few other things that are important and I'm very I need to see what the balance is gonna be in a kind of decision or I completely support.
Don't think. Well, it circulated a survey and there was a pretty good turnout and it's showing that the majority is supportive of it. And so that is remember, we do these surveys so that it's beyond us fifteen people. It matters to the entire community. So we had a really good turnout in this graph of students and parents. In fact, they were the majorities. Um I love seeing that. Thank you to everybody who participated in this because this is really what we should be basing our decisions off of. That's why we're sitting here. Um so there was a generally higher supportive. I did read in some of the letters that we've received and some other emails I got that um they responded with a no in the survey, but then they had to elaborate as to why. And I think a lot of people think it's choosing one or the other. And that's not necessarily the case, as I understand. We can build it all in if we wanted to. And um on the back though, I think there's a discrepancy um with the breakdown, which is really cool, but it said yes and yes, and there's not a no. Is it supposed to be yes and no?
Oh, yeah.
And so I couldn't quite read that data, but um generally supported on the front and that's great. And I will say that I, this is gonna be a hard budget season, but I support all the interventionists. I support all the um counselors in every mental health aspect we can. Sean, I totally agree. It's a multifaceted modality that is best suited for all kids. Um it takes all kinds. And this to me, said it before, say it again, there is no price that I'm not willing to pay for safety, security and support for our children during this time, especially with the mental health situations. Um and it's, it's all very important. So I just, I felt like we were really getting on the course of, we had to start making um this or that conversations right off the bat. And it was kind of like, we should just talk about what is heavily supported and or under-supported by the community and just look at data in decision at first, um because maybe we can have it all. But I'm a dreamer. Anyway.
I think Tyler also has his hand raised, so I will, if he has something to say, I'll go after him. Tyler?
I just, I have a, I have a lot of I I I guess I'm not against an S R O and principal. I just, I don't know where the money's coming from. We're looking at at three quarters of a million dollar increase in staffing positions alone this year. And on top of everything else going out, we have to turn around and sell this to our constituents. We're looking at what, I think the first report was over two million dollar increase this year on a twenty million dollar budget. So we can talk about safety all we want, but at the end of the day, the taxpayers still have to pay for this. And it's a position that funds at one, it's at one building permanently, or it can move to other positions, but it's based out of one building. When we're looking at multi-building positions that we may have to cut to justify this if we don't want to blow up the budgets in all of the towns. I just, I I I think it's a decision we can have, but I just don't think it's right to be on this year's budget when we have so much else going on it.
Patty?
I totally agree with what Tyler just said. I also, like Christine, have worked with school resource officers and had seen amazing, wonderful, awesome things and understand the research and understand our research and who would need healthy as always that we should do. This is what we should be basing our decisions on or our processing on. And when I look at that break, broke up, um the broken up responses by groups, I think the second category is a no, supposed to be a no. Yeah. Yeah, that's what he said last time. And so I think about it and I think we have heard a lot from people who have said they support school resource officers. I personally have had wonderful experiences working with school resource officers. When I look at these numbers, I'm the students and parent um staff member numbers are larger in the no category than the yes category, but the parents and community numbers are larger in the yes category and the no than the no. And so I think if we're using this, we're in a bit of a conundrum because it's really split. And that's not to say we shouldn't use it. I just think when we really look at it, it isn't as simple as most people, most people did say yes on this graph. But when we look at the breakdown, sort of like constituents are split and that gives me pause. The other thing that gives me pause is all the things that Tyler was saying. So just wanted to say. Quick feedback, and then you. I love the things you talked. I um, yes, and so the largest supporters were the most.
So um I looked at the survey too. One of the concerns I had about the survey in the context of the budget is it doesn't, it's not a full discussion of what would you choose if we can add everything. I'm all about, let's add all, let's go with principals, social workers, counselors, school psychologists, school resource officer. I've not seen a budget pass that is filled, especially when we, our goal is zero increase, right? And or what's, sorry, not zero increase, but zero, sorry, what's the goal? For the budget. It will never be zero, but um I don't think we've come up with a specific number. Okay, so so if we could add everything, then then that's great. Um but and and with regard to the survey, um I think it's really easy for people to say, I mean, I was a little disappointed. I knew that that was going to be the question. Do you want a school resource officer or not? It's out of any kind of context, sure. You know, we don't know what position would be. We don't know.
where the person will be. We don't know how much it's going to cost. So I just think it was a little bit of an uninformed, um, kind of initial, uh, ask. Um, and so maybe if you said we'd rather have a school resource officer or any of these other positions, it might be a little bit different. Um, but if we can add it all, great. Like I said, and just to be really clear, um, this is not in any way, shape, or form, any criticism of any enforcement person. Love them all. It's great stuff. That's a different, you know, just I want to be very clear that that is not at all verified and come.
Anyone else?
I'm chair and I make a motion that we move the school resource officer into the budget.
Second.
For discussion, so that's actually part of the numbers.
Any discussion on that motion? Go ahead, David.
Um. I stated my concerns for you. And so I can easily vote yes for that. If we're also voting for a number of other things going in there.
Not saying otherwise, it's a separate motion and by itself. I'm not saying it to be in there permanently. I'm saying so it can be part of the budget discussion numbers. Because if we want to put it like, like these things are in, if we want to start moving stuff in and out based on who would have that, like, it's not part of the bottom line number. And so it's not on discussion. And as someone said, you know, it wasn't fair because it didn't say this or didn't say if we if we want to put a number of the principal at Wayne Elementary infects fifty kids, I think that would change people or sixty kids. I think that might change people's minds on how they vote. That's not the road I want. But I think it needs to be moved in, so it's part of the, the bottom line budget. Because it's the only position not on, on here that's not part of the budget. Not saying it needs to say, no more than all these positions probably aren't. Maybe they will, but I'd be very surprised.
So I have a question about that. Is that, is the, the other positions really aren't yet in the general budget? Because there are ESSR funds or funding streams from other places. So they're not already in the budget.
That's right. And that is the guidance fund.
Right.
So, so, okay, so I want to be clear. So these positions right here are not in the budget. We're not in that budget.
In less specified in budget. Right? Some of these days they're already carved out in the budget.
So these say in budget.
If they don't say that, they're not in the budget. They're not built in the So these aren't one of these.
They're all currently grant funded and we need to buy whatever. Because they'll have to come out of the
I am full.
Go ahead.
So when do you need to just answer then, if you want these in the budget? Because I'm ready right now.
We were hoping spring, I was hoping to bring a first job since March first budget. So if I have that, if it's these positions, I'll have that. If I don't have that, it's yet done until March nine. Like I need that and so. If you wanted to think about it, one meeting, you can do that and then I'll bring the first job on March nine. So.
Because our, our next meeting is March first, which is what we were hoping at, then we would have the first draft of the budget. At our next meeting.
We won't.
So we have, so we have to decide tonight.
Yeah, one.
If these are going or staying.
Then I stand by the motion.
Patty?
It's not about the motion.
Well, I was just going to ask, what what form does that take? So do we have to make a motion about every one of these things then to talk about? We can say we want them all, we want some things and so on. So much in the work.
Uh, in discussion on this motion, I would personally vote it down and make a new motion for all the ones on the superintendent's recommendation we moved into the budget. And that any others we then discuss and make a new motion.
I'm saying. We have it down the budget.
Can we have the discussion so everybody can hear what we're saying? Can we just start so everybody can hear what we're saying? So the motion on the floor is to include the SRO in the budget. Even though we don't have them. But we'll, we'll get that. We'll get that once we decide we want to. Is there any other discussion on the SRO being put into the budget?
Let's pick a little focus. So, um, Kristen there first?
Yeah.
Jane, she?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Tyler?
No.
Christine?
No.
Kathy?
Yes.
Patty?
No.
Rebecca?
Yeah.
Patty?
No.
Sean?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
David Switchen?
No.
And Eric, what's your?
Yes.
Jeff, five? No. Donovan, check.
You don't do a weighted.
Seven, yes, yep. So seven, yes, the wall. Patty, and I will get the number and I will immediately get that out to you guys um, as soon as possible, right? I want to just basically get the number. I will shoot that out as soon as I know it to the door so that they're ready.
So other discussion on these, some of these other, I, I do have something that I didn't think to say. Um, I, I actually, I want to go back to the elementary guidance and social worker. So we have three elementary guidance people right now. And we have one elementary social worker. Is that right? My question is, how does KBH fit into this team?
So.
Kind of a.
Yeah, KBH, we actually have a bunch of them and they've been referred into KBH.
Right. And I understand that. I just wonder what the numbers are in, in, and I know that they support kids in all of our schools. But I just, they weren't included in any of the in, on the wonderful information and data that we got from the, from the guidance council. So I was just wondering, you know, as we think about all these positions and all the support that we need for our students. And, and I'm, I'm really appreciate the way that everyone's going back to what our students, what our kids need. Because that's really what we need to be thinking about here. I just want to know where, you know, how many numbers, what are the numbers of KBH?
I can get that number. I never even thought, because it's an outside service, but I think that's a general number.
In the same, in, in maybe a little different way, but Patty?
My question about that, and it's the same question I have when we keep saying this, I think I've even said it, is we, we have had three elementary school counselors. But we have, the question is, one is from ESSR funds, right?
Right.
Yes. Okay, so we really don't have. That's all, that's all. I just.
So the question actually is, yeah. We have, let's just say that we have two. So do we want to keep this one and put it in the budget? That, is that basically? So it would be putting the seventy eight thousand in the budget for the third guidance counselor. Patty? Is that right?
I was just, is that what you're thinking? I wasn't, I wasn't saying that I would like to do that, but I wasn't saying that. I was just saying we really just have two.
So you were clear. No, is that we have two.
Yeah. It's a question. Um, the third guidance counselor that provided for a body as one of that, a specific counselor in a specific school? Or is that just, is it just sort of their one third of?
Yeah, it's, it's kind of shared. Um, I'm going to be honest, I don't have their schedule in front of me, so I can't tell you. But I know they've worked out a schedule amongst the three of them on how they're going to cover the schools.
Okay.
Um, and, yeah, and I would just add that, um, if, if we end up with another one, then we'll, again, reevaluate that schedule to see if it's the most beneficial to students making good use of these counselors time, you know.
Patty? I don't know if this answers your question, but in one of the notes from the elementary from Tara and Becky, it says in the one, two, three, fourth paragraph, it says, um, five percent of our students see our social worker or kind of a behavioral health clinician as a tier three intervention. I don't know if that answers your question or you want more specific.
Yeah, it, it, it did for the tier three intervention. I, and it's, I guess my other question is the social worker and KBH counselors, are they seeing just tier three and the school counselors or anybody else? No.
She's saying yes.
I'll let Abby, if it's okay. Abby, do you want to speak first?
We, we've been meeting with social workers and guidance counselors in the last few days to really kind of hammer that down. Um, so KBTH really only works with tier three. Um, and I'd say that your numbers are probably pretty accurate when you talk about five percent. Would you say five percent of the total population between the school social worker and KBTH is probably about five percent? Um, and so, uh, KBTH would be tier three. Uh, the school social worker does tier three, but they do do some of tier two. Um, some like group work with students, um, you know, some um, maybe, maybe supporting or doing consulting on behavior plans and things like that. So it's not just exclusive tier three.
Is there shared through the four?
The social worker goes into all four schools. Yeah, yeah. So basically has a day in each school and then a day is split. Um, you know, just best you can with that kind of schedule, which is a challenge. KBTH, I don't know if we have the same one in all the schools. I think there are two different KBTH at the elementary level. And guidance is split, um, Tara's in three schools, two, you're in two. Becky's in two and then the third, Molly is in three schools. So she's in Tara's schools and Reed Field. Awesome. So her weakest spot up, so.
Thank you.
Kathy, can I make a motion? The other?
Yes.
I'd like to, um, make a motion that we put all grant funded positions into the budget for consideration. And just to elaborate on that, we're building. You want to, Shamen liked us, inspired us to build it and then we whittled. So let's put those in. Yeah.
Any other discussion on putting all of these in the budget? And, and we're talking about just the grant fund, not the ones below that that they can, right?
Well, those are built in, as I understand. Yep. Any discussion? What? Any other discussion? Okay, let's take a vote. Right, Tyler, you have your hand up. You see it.
I was gonna offer an amendment to the motion to add all of the positions to the budget, including the non-grant funded ones.
They're already in.
They're already in, okay.
The only one that's, that's not going to be in the general budget is, um, the adult ed position moving there full time. And that will be based on its grant funding.
Okay.
And we had talked about.
Okay.
He's, he's basically generating revenue. Sean?
So we're going to move every one of these into the budget.
That's the motion. And then if we don't, we keep someone to see what.
Then we're going to whittle one down, but. All right, I'm not.
Because it is not built in, it's off the table, correct?
Yeah.
And then I would also just add these are positions that the administrative team and teacher staffs that they need. I would not put it. Just out. Any other discussion?
Um, Kristen, you're first again.
I'm going to say no.
Jane?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Rebecca? Patty?
Yes, I guess.
Sean?
No.
Phil?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Um, Eric?
Was there any other board discussion about the budget? So go ahead. Just one more question about the school resource officer position. Um, will we, um, is there a plan to? I thought that the survey to the community was an initial kind of, what do you think about this? And then we were going to follow up with gathering additional information. I might be wrong about that. Um, was it just a yes or no? Or were we going to ask? Or have some kind of forum? I can't remember. I thought there was something else happening.
No, I would say like, if it fully makes it through the budget, then I think the work starts at that point where we do have some community forums. We do some, we do some very important part, lay the stage groundwork so that when we start in the fall, if it's in place, that everyone has a clear picture of what's going on. Come up with a, memory and a bit of understanding with the sheriff's department and make sure, you know, the job responsibilities are defined very clearly. Make sure our communities know who that person is and the high rate. You know, I think there's a lot of work to do at that point. Um, if it makes it through the budget, we'll have some work to do during summer.
Okay, so, so wouldn't be feedback about the position, it would be or regarding, um, that like, okay. So it wouldn't be whether or not, it would be what's it going to look like if we got Scotty. Thank you.
Sean? Well, I would like information on how many students each of these positions is going to affect in our schools. And if we're going to single out the SRO, then I'm ready to start singling those.
Any other discussion? I feel like I need a little.
I, I just, I, I don't think anybody's singling out anything. I think we're trying to make a decision about how to spend the taxpayers' money. And the only reason that there are additional questions, at least from me, on the school resource officer is because that would be a new position to the district. These are all positions that are already existing. We, we know what those people do. We know that they're needed. We, people have asked for these positions. So, um, I certainly don't want to be singling out anything. I, I think it all needs to be considered. As I've said, I work with, appreciate and would like for the district to have a school resource officer. I'm just not sure I would want that if it came at the expense of these other positions.
David?
I think you're right, Sean, and I think that's what the continuum of the budget process is. We're going to have to look at all these positions individually, hopefully with even more information on the value of each one. And, uh, a lot of other things too probably and say, well, we just can't do this or we can do that. And so, yes, we're going to need to individually deal. And so, yes, we're gonna need to individually deal with each of these. So our decisions, neither is, stand basically to include the SRO and to include each others in that consideration. Thank you.
When we added some of these positions to federal funds, I clearly remember, I asked the question, I wasn't the only board member to ask the question. We need this for right now, but this will be up for debate. So I don't want to act like, or I'm not gonna act like, I can speak for myself, like these are part of the permanent budget. When we put these in the budget, the elementary school principal, I remember Claire's day that we talked about, we needed it because students were so far behind because they were at a pain. And we need to catch them up, but we will talk about this, we talked about the cliff and the money that we need. If you go right down through this list, and I'll stop there. So I don't, I'm not gonna act like these were part of the permanent budget. We knew, we got those federal funds and added these positions, that they were not part of the permanent budget. I'm happy to pull the minutes from those meetings to provide that to be more news. I remember that.
I do too. Tyler?
I think, I think what separates the SRO from all of these other positions is that the positions that we're talking about cutting, nurses, guidance counselors, literacy specialists, interventionalists, and ed techs are direct student support services. These are helping our most at-risk students who are, in most cases, struggling academically. And SRO does not solve that problem. And when we're looking at a two million dollar budget increase, this doesn't preclude us from discussing an SRO next year, but at this year, we're looking at a two million dollar budget increase, we're still not in agreement on what we want the SRO to, SRO to do. I think we take the next year, figure out what we want it to do, and bring it in next year's budget. I just don't think this is the year to do it when we're looking at a seven hundred thousand dollar cliff, just in staffing alone.
So I just, I do have to say, Tyler, that I disagree that, uh, SRO does not directly impact kids, because I think they do. Anyone else?
I would like to add that, Kathy, that it is impossible to quantify what kind of benefit they can provide emotionally, spiritually, physically, blah, blah, blah. We cannot say they will not deter, that's immeasurable. We have to remember that in our discussions, when we talk about the value of any position, that you cannot quantify what they will or won't do. So just want to bring that, that to reality.
Did?
I'm sixty years old, I said, I came to this school from day one. I've seen a lot of changes. And I'll tell you, the last twenty, thirty years, I've seen it go from peaceful, none of these problems that's going on around the country, to some crazy stuff. And, um, I'm telling you, I hate to say it, and, and it's awful that we've come to the point where I, I really think we need something, a little more safety. Um, and an officer would bring, I don't know, watch the table. And, uh, but like I said, I've seen some changes over my lifetime, this moving and done. And, and it's sad that it's, it's come to this, but it's, we need.
Well, and I was gonna say, also, we don't want to speculate as to, um, potential situations that could arise in the future. I mean, we've been really lucky so far, you know, saying we haven't needed anyone on site, well, that's available. But we've been lucky, we don't know what can happen down the road, and we have to take into consideration that that could include students not being able to access the classroom, schools being closed for however many number of days, which would act, which would restrict their education. Um, that would have a detriment to their education, we're talking about our first mission, which is to provide education. And also the reality is that schools are becoming, um, we're becoming responsible, or we're being given a lot more in terms of, um, expected to do to help students, not just education anymore, it's so many other things, unfortunately, that's just reality, it's not just their, their standardized testing, it's so much more that they bring from their family life, on some phone, that we are unfortunately, we're kind of the catch-all, right? I mean, we're the ones that they see every day, so we're gonna be the ones that hopefully are able to pick up on things and to help them. Um, but that's important, just going back to what, we don't know what the future's gonna bring, I mean, it could, we don't know. So I think it's important to just be prepared. Thank you.
Felty?
One more quick thing, I know, you really want to get going first. Um, I think about these things, and I think about, Christine, I think you brought it up, um, as a district, we're trying to be attractive, we want people to come and work here. And we are kind of looking for a blow-up here, and these are things that I do think potential staff look for. Um, it's an attraction to some, and at least in the ones I've talked to. Um, and so if we're looking to add things to our district, it comes with a price tag, but it also comes with an attraction fee. So things to consider as we move forward, but, um, yeah, I just, I just don't want anybody to cut anything off the table to.
So can I just say something before I call on Patty? Because it sort of follows up. So when we talk about the price tag, the reality is, in the next couple of years, and Tyler, I re- I really appreciate what you're saying about how much this budget is going up. I think we need every single thing that's on the table in our schools for our kids. Hands down. The budget is going to keep going up. This year is not going to be any diff- next year's gonna probably be even worse. The following year, it's going to be even worse. We need to look to the future, and this is not going to be a very popular thing that I'm gonna say, but I'm gonna say it anyway, because I think we need to start thinking about consolidating, uh, elementary schools and really looking at, how many staff do we need for our element, if we had one elementary school in this district? And we, if we really want to do that, and look at what's best for our students in this district in the future, we need to start doing that now, because it is a process that takes a long time to do it. And I would like to see us start to work on that this year. Doesn't impact this year's budget, but it will in the future, and I think it's time that we start seriously, not just talking about it. We've been talking about this all along for many years that I've been here. I feel that it is time to move forward and look at meeting fairness for every student in the elementary school across this district, because I, I can say, I don't think it's fair right now. I do not think there's equity across the district. I do not think every student gets the same opportunity, and we owe them that. And I think it's time that we looked at that, what is our very first step gonna be to head in that direction? Won't help this year, but we need to do. Patty?
I think we do need to look at that, and I think we do need to look at, uh, a budget plan, like a forward thinking, like what will our, like, how can we plan now for a budget? Um, it, it seems like we always, and I don't know how to get out of it, maybe it's impossible to get out of, but it would be great if we could get out of, though we're scurrying around to fix it right now. But all of, so I think we do need to take action on these things. And in addition, I think that when we're talking, I think that Tyler, I totally agree with what he said about thinking about our budget being, um, about thinking about direct service and about our budget. I think it's good to have everything in, and we'll whittle it down, and I think that was the way to go, and I meant it when I said yes, voting for it. But I think that we are speculating about a gazillion things. And then we're saying we can't speculate, but we're still speculating. So the difference between the resource, school resource officer line and the other lines on that piece of paper in front of us right now, are that we are speculating less about the other lines, because there's been some experience, some data, and some input from stakeholders about them, even if they're grant-funded, even if we knew they were gonna end all of that stuff. We are, we are, we don't have that same experience about the school resource officer, and that's why it sounds different in my brain. And that's why I, I thought Tyler was saying, like, it totally made sense to me.
Do we have any citizen comments? On any of the things that we discussed? We do have a, um, letter from one of our citizens, Barbara Bublin, she wrote this one to all of us, I think that everybody put a bump in at that. Um, she, I'm just gonna briefly say that she, um, wasn't sure that it was the right time to school resource officer. Um, she had something about the, um, elective courses for the high school. Um, why not offer that course next year and evaluate the impact? And then she, she also talked about that, you know, this may be the time to start looking at. So, I think I, you know, really start looking at what the pros and cons of that would be.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
The RSU, I don't know if anybody's been watching the news the last few weeks, with the false, coming in from out of the country, the false, um, saying that the school's gonna be shot up and all this stuff. I think with an RSU, they could be in here early in the morning and say, yes, it's all clear. It looks good, where, I don't know, we have the staff available to say that it's all clear and all this stuff. The faster the kids can get back into the schools, the better, the more they're learning. But I don't know if you've been watching, but there's a lot going on right now. It seems like every day, someone pulling this new stunt, calling in a school and causing trouble. But I think with someone, um, in the profession, can give the school a more clear, it's, it's a false.
And I think, I think once we act, I mean, we'll, we'll be looking at these things again and have chance for more discussion. You know, as we look at each one of these items, whether or not we want to keep them or not keep them, you know, where they want to go. So there'll be more opportunity for us to discuss all of these things. Patty?
I was just gonna say, um, about the recommendation about consolidation, or a discussion about consolidation and about, uh, financial plans and about the items on the budget thing, um, that we don't have a plan for yet, like we, like, we don't know just what the parameters, but if we do include the school resource officer non-budget, we don't know what that will look like yet, because we haven't made the plan yet. Like, we have some information, but we don't know just what that will look like for our district. So I feel like we, I don't know how we do it, but it would be great if we could make a specific plan. It sounds like we're gonna have a specific plan to talk about all of the items in the budget, but for those other things, a, a future financial plan and a talking about consolidation that may be connected together.
So I think next, one of the upcoming, is it next, our next meeting, Jay's gonna talk to us about our strategic plan. So I'm hoping that we can have more discussion around what is our strategic plan for the next five years, maybe.
One question on consolidation.
Yeah.
Um, I've been through it, I've been through it. Last time, it was brutal. Do we have anything from the past that we might have learned from? And what we could do better, because
Oh, yeah.
I think the last time we did it, there was a lot of our constituents, constituents that weren't really well-informed, and we were just kind of winging this as we were going through it. I think we might have, like, if we go back and relive it, re- re- look at it, we might have a, a better way of presenting this, especially when it comes to where my kid's going to, which school here and here, I don't want my kids on a bus from six AM in the morning.
Those are all the things that we would have to look at when we talk about the pros and cons.
And, and so you said we do have
Yes.
all that information. Right, thank you.
But I will say that I've had several parents from all communities say, are we ever gonna talk about consolidation? So I think we're in a different time, but anyway, that's for another discussion, that's for another time. Now, any other comments from the pub, from the citizens? Any other comments from the board?
It's Sean's birthday, happy birthday, Sean.
So, um, okay, so do I have a, um, motion to go into executive session?
I move to go into executive session to consider negotiations between the RSU thirty-eight board of directors and RSU thirty-eight administrators, directors and management, managers pursuant to MRSA Title I, Section 40560.
Second.
Okay, um, Christine?
Yes.
David G?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Um, Christine?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Rebecca? Betty?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Felty?
Yes.
David T?
Yes.
And Eric, you can vote.
Yes.
Thank you, Eric. So unanimous, we're now, and we start to, we'll move over to the, um, middle school band room.
I was monitoring very, very, very carefully. Um, so we all shared airtime. Um, everyone was polite, I just think it's important as we go forward that when there is a topic, um, that people might not see eye to eye on, that we continue to agree to disagree, so we can all get along and everything will be great. And other than that, A plus.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that.
Annie, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, I got it.
We're adjourned.
Thank you all very much.